City of Northland, Channel 8, keeping you informed of events in your community.
I'd like to call the regular city council meeting to order. Joanna, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Downing?
Here.
Mayor Protem, Carol Dodge?
Here.
Councilmember Snessinger?
Here.
Councilmember Malika?
Here.
Councilmember Wayne Dodge?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Carrico?
Here.
Councilmember Whitman?
Here.
Councilmember Winnicky?
Here.
Thank you. Would you stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Does the council have any additions or doations for this agenda? No? All right, next we have interviews. Avery Anderson. Hi Avery, it's good to see you again.
Thank you, good to see you too.
Thank you. For the audience and the rest of the council, would you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you picked the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board?
Of course. I'm Avery Anderson. I'm 18 and I'm currently a student at Metro City University. I'm working on getting my degree in recreational professions, so this is kind of the perfect fit. I've been on the Northland Youth Commission, well, just finished my time on the Northland Youth Commission for about two years. And I'm in Ward 2 and it just opened up, so it was like perfect timing. I want to stay involved with the city. I've been here all my life and I've done lots of volunteer opportunities and I love our Parks and Rec and I just really want to help them and seeing that that's where I kind of want to focus my life and go there someday, it was a perfect opportunity. So, that's why I would like to be on the board.
Okay, great. Are there any questions for Avery? Kim?
Avery, have you attended any of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board meetings?
I've never been to the meetings before.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
I just wanted to say that I thought it was great that you were always on the Youth Commission and now carrying on now into another capacity as an 18-year-old. I thought it was really impressive and I'm thrilled that you're applying.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes. So, after serving with Avery for years on the Youth Commission at Lehigh, he is so well qualified to do this because he is always there, he's pumped, and he's very involved. So I can't think of a better board member. And honestly, I was thinking maybe there's a run for city council in your future. Just kind of saying. I love this. I thought about that. You never know, right?
That's right.
You're getting there.
That's funny.
That's a waste of time.
Because I thought the same thing, so...
Great minds think alike.
Scaring him, he's going to start running right now. Is there any other questions? Well, thank you.
I think a great job you've done in the community. I mean, every event we're at, you're there working something at the event, so good for you.
Thank you.
I agree. You know, when I saw that application, I really got excited to see that you are still interested in this. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, present interview is for Susan Waldman. Hi Susan.
Good evening, how are you?
I'm great, how are you doing?
Excellent, thank you. So I heard the spiel, I'm also a big Avery fan.
Okay, there you go.
So that's another thumbs up for Avery. I'm Susan Waldman, I'm a 20-year resident of the city of Northland. Love it, four kids and the schools here. Love the IB and STEM programs, so thank you for developing and supporting those. And I've come to know the Parks and Rec, well, obviously for 20 years I've done a lot in the parks of Northland, but as the event lead for the Relay for Life this last year, I had an opportunity to work hand-in-hand with the park system. And my hats go up to them, they do just a phenomenal job. And talking to Amanda and seeing the position open, I said, "Well, that's another way I could get back to the community." So, I'd like to join them and help make the parks safe and enjoyable for the rest of the residents and my family.
Great. Anybody have any questions?
Susan, thank you for applying. Have you attended any of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board meetings?
I did, but I have a caveat. I had to go in front of them to get my sound permit for the city. So, for my event. So, I will give it a caveat, and that is the only meeting that I've attended. And shame on me, as a 20-year resident, this is only my second city council. You guys do a much better job than the rest of us.
And then, my other question is, I noticed that you also chose several other boards and commissions that you had an interest in?
Yeah, and honestly, I didn't know a lot about them. And before I started talking to Amanda and working with the parks, I didn't even realize that these types of positions were open in the community. Obviously, I knew about the elected positions, but to know that laypeople serve on these different boards, I thought, "Gosh, this is great." And there are so many interesting areas to be involved in the city, so I feel remiss that I didn't step up forward before, but I think lots of interesting areas to help the city.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'd say thanks for all your help in the past too. And how'd the Relay do this year?
It was great. And can I just make a plug for the Relay?
You may.
I know that you've received a lot of emails, I mean, a lot of voicemails from our ACS person, Mayor, so thanks for dealing with those. But we raised a little under $100,000. We had 254 participants. And this was a rebuilding year for us, so we've been as high as $155,000 that we've raised. So we're looking to get more organizations involved, we're looking to get younger people involved. It tends to be an organization where people are affected by cancer, they become involved, but seeing the work that the American Cancer Society does is just phenomenal. So, if we could get city council involved and get you guys to get a team, because the mayor in Thornton over there, oh my goodness, she's trying to set a place, so I want to challenge her. I'll call ya. They will not outshine us this year, but I will need your help.
All right, we can take care of it.
I think council next year should have a team.
That's right.
Yes! And we have had in the past, we have. Perfect!
I have walked the midnight, actually with Wayne, we were there and stuff.
I've been, I think every one of them.
Yes, yes.
Yes, and Dodge Science has been a great supporter and sponsor of the event, so I think it's a great highlight for the city, it's a great highlight for our parks, and to have the community come in, I think is just a phenomenal showcase.
I just wanted to say, you know, anybody who can run the Relay of, you know, Relay for Life, it's obviously very impressive in your management skills and capabilities.
Oh, thank you.
Are immense. I do have a question though for you. I was wondering, how would you recommend that we publicize? We've tried different ways of publicizing that we have openings on boards and commissions, but someone that's even active, you know, you weren't aware of them, how would you recommend that we maybe get the word out?
You know, I think that is so difficult in small communities, and we're going through it with the Relay as well. So, you try the Northland Connection and people read that, but they tend to read the same things that they always read. I don't know, if we can get into homeowners associations, if we can get into organizations and start talking to them about how they can give to the community, particularly in these environments where it's one meeting a month, it's not the same job that you guys have. So, a lot of us, the people can follow those, but it's got to be word of mouth. For 20 years, I didn't pick up on it, so I understand the uphill battle.
Thank you.
All right, is there anything else?
Yes. I just want to tell Kim, after she's been pleading up here to get members to apply for the board, now she's getting two really great candidates applying, so thank you for coming out. And you also are very well qualified, and thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks guys.
Thank you for having me this evening.
Joyce, before we, can I just, I just, my only, I think they are both great candidates and I absolutely would recommend that they get appointed. My only thing is that in most cases, the board or commission gets the opportunity to speak with them and then make a recommendation. And unfortunately, the Parks and Rec Advisory Board hasn't met either of these to talk to them about a position on the board. So, I would like to at least make sure that, see if we can get that opportunity.
Sure.
But again, I fully support their appointment to the board.
And I believe normally, Crystal, from the city clerk's office, tells them when the meetings are so that they can come and be, you know, kind of see how the board is run. So, we'll kind of reinforce that.
I don't think you've had a quorum though, the past couple meetings.
That's been an issue, but it hasn't been on any of the agendas, items either, to get that before the meeting. So, but yeah, we have certainly had quorum issues, or at least get the information to the board so that they know who's applying and stuff.
Okay, thank you. All right. Is Debbie Tuttle here? She's not here? Okay, so I'll read the proclamation from here, which is for Small Business Saturday. Whereas the government of Northland, Colorado celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 27.9 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of American employer firms, create more than 2/3rds of the net new jobs, and generate 46% of private gross domestic product, as well as 54% of all the U.S. sales. And whereas small businesses employ over 55% of the working population in the United States, and whereas 89% of consumers in the United States agree that small businesses contribute positively to the local community by supplying jobs and generating tax revenue, and whereas 87% of consumers in the United States agree that small businesses are critical to the overall economic health of the United States, and whereas 93% of consumers in the United States agree that it is important for people to support the small businesses that they value in their community. And whereas the city of Northland supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods, and whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed this Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Joyce Downing, Mayor of the city of Northland, Colorado, do hereby proclaim November 28th, 2015, as Small Business Saturday in the city of Northland, and urge the residences of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year, dated at Northland, Colorado, this 26th day of October, 2015. Now, next on the agenda, I do have a dedicated service award. So, could council come down and join? I do believe I see the entire liquor licensing board here. Please, Teresa, can you come up?
My stuff is already up there, I'm back down here for this.
Okay, all right. I'd like to move this to you. The city council and myself share this dedicated service award presented to Teresa Rycoff, Northland Liquor Licensing Authority, September 9th, 2013 to October 19th, 2015, presented by the mayor and the city council of Northland, this 26th day of October, 2015. Congratulations.
Oh, no wonder you're with me. To be with my family, whose grandma can't stand being with her. I know, we're going to miss you. I'm going to be so glad, too. Sure. No? Oh, yeah, thank you. Sure. Oh, you're welcome.
It's making four for four for the mayor.
Sure Kyle. You're going to have to go all the way down. I know, because I know all the ways. Damn, we're seat backs, right? Be safe. Come back and see us, right? There's too many good friends. Thanks for all your work. Thank you.
Thank you again for all you...
Not only liquor work, but...
He can...
That's true. That's true. So because you're leaving, you're going to have to stay for the entire meeting, right? Only kidding. All right, next we have the Youth Commission Quarterly Report.
Hello. I'm Chandler Sanchez.
And I'm Peyton Larson.
And we're board members on the Northland Youth Commission. So, our third annual quarter began with quite a bang. We participated in National Night Out, where we got to meet with local police officers and local city council members and go across different communities in Northland. And I think it was a really fun time, and we got to see a lot of different parts of the city and got to get, have, share some bonds with like other members of the community.
And a lot of good food, too.
A lot of good food.
For Cities and Towns Week, we worked on a video that promoted Youth Commission and the success of local government.
Sadly, Mayor, the move was canceled this year. However, we still managed to be very involved with the community this quarter, and we actually did quite a bit.
We also participated in the 24-hour Walk the Relay for Life. We walked for the Cancer Society, the American Cancer Society. We raised over $1,000.
We also upkeeped and eventually took out the Veteran Memorial Flower Bed, which was very cool. And more recently, we added a new member, Isabel Cunis, and we also have a new secretary, which is Chandler Sanchez.
More recently, we participated in Safe Street, like last Saturday, by like creating cookies and giving them to little kids. We also worked on the goals for this year.
Next quarter, we will be participating in a youth summit on November 7th to 8th, which we will try to bond more together and collaborate with other commissions in Colorado to see how they get the youth involved with local governments.
We will also be volunteering for the annual Noel, Northland.
Are there any questions?
I do have. Can you elaborate on your goals? You said you were working on this.
A lot of our goals for this next quarter and this next year is to try to get the youth from various age ranges to get involved with government and even onto the Youth Commission, because right now we have a lot of 15 and 16-year-olds, sophomores, middle grade, and we're trying to see more from other spectrums of youth.
We're also trying to boost like getting active and everything, like to get healthy and be happier.
Great. And then, Mayor, on the move. I mean, this has been a summer that it just rained every time we tried to meet. So maybe we can do it next year if you can promise to have sunshine on the days we go out. I'm not sure if you can do that.
Let's have to do like a sundance instead of rain dance.
There you go. I like that. Okay. Is there any other questions from the council?
I just want to commend you for the great work that you're doing and how you guys are always out there doing great things. I mean, really honorable things, raising money for cancer and just... You're great. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I think you guys did a great job out there. Next year, actually, you should have a contest with the council's team on the Relay for Life, see who raises more money.
We won the scavenger hunt this year, so you'll have to come.
Now, you do understand that this man here is a short-termer, and he's already getting a team for us to get him.
I guess we got a team captain right here.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Next, we have Public Invited to Be Heard. Five minutes per speaker. Would anyone like to speak to the council related to city business? Okay?
No, you had one.
Yes, okay.
So, I'm Hannah Mullen, and I'm with Congressman Perlmutter's office. I just wanted to come and give you all a quick update on some events that we have coming up over the next two months. So, next Saturday, I think you're all familiar, I sent an email out to all of you, we're going to have a Government and the Grocery Event at the Natural Grocers. It's from 10:00 a.m. until noon, and that's Saturday, November 7th. So, it's basically our office bringing mobile office hours into a grocery store. So, we welcome all of you to come and say hi or visit. That would be awesome. The next event that we have is on Friday, November 20th. It's a Senior Resource Fair. So, it's going to be at the Wheat Ridge Rec Center, and it's 10:00 a.m. to noon. We had an event in Thornton in March, and 130 people attended. We're hoping that we'll get even more people to come. We have over 30 organizations that are going to be there providing resources, anywhere from transportation to mental health. We'll have social security, VA, Medicare, you name it, we got it. So, really encourage people to attend. It's an awesome event, and there's a lot of great resources there.
What were the hours again, Hannah?
I'm sorry, what were the hours again on that? It's 10:00 a.m. until noon.
10:00, thank you.
Sure. And then, also, we have, we're in the process of going through our academy nominations. So, on November 14th, we're going to be interviewing 40 high school kids who are seeking a nomination to go to the Air Force Academy, Naval Academy, West Point. We have two from Northland, so very exciting. One is looking to go to the Air Force Academy, and one is looking to go to the Naval Academy. And one of them is actually from Northland, but he's in Hawaii right now. He's in the Navy and he's enlisted, so we're going to have a phone interview from Hawaii, so that'll be interesting. But yeah, so that's another thing that's happening. And then lastly, we also have a youth advisory council, and we have two students from Northland High School, and they're in there doing great things. So, a little bit of things happening with our office.
Thank you for coming here.
Sure.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I'll close that vote, and the consent agenda passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, whose ordinance is first reading?
This is for CB 1858, the Bill for an Ordinance Amending Certain Sections of Chapter 16, Article 15 of the Northland Municipal Code Regarding Industrial Pretreatment Regulations for Public Sewers.
Move to approve. Second, David.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. This has to do with our industrial pretreatment program. It's administered by the Environmental Protection Agency. It's been, we've been, we've had the program since 1986. Staff is proposing three definition changes here. The first one, two words, general prohibitions, and it shows up in the ordinance language in the first part. And the second one is three or four words here for the same pollutant parameter. That also shows up in the second, Section 2, in your ordinance changes. Both of those. The first one has to do with all types of pollutants, and the second one is more for chronic pollutants. And then the last and final one, add a few words, it's called a discharge that is of A, and that has to do with a slug discharge. And a slug discharge is a high concentration of a pollutant going into our sanitary sewer system and eventually to our wastewater treatment plant. And the purpose of the program is to keep those pollutants out of the plant.
Discussion? Hearing none, please open the vote.
Vote is open.
Please vote.
I'll close that vote, and CB 1858 on first reading passes unanimously. And I would like to note for the record that the public hearing on CB 1858 will be held on November 23rd, 2015, here in City Hall Council Chambers.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to resolutions. The first one is CR 127.
A resolution certifying delinquent municipal charges to the Adams County Treasurer for collection pursuant to CRS Section 31-20-105.
Move to approve. Second?
Mayor, councilmembers, the next three resolutions have to do with authorizing municipal certified delinquent charges to the county treasurer for collection. Once the mouse are certified, the county treasurer assigns these special assessments of the property accounts and collects the charges in addition to property taxes. This year, all three of these resolutions, 127, 128, 129, total $19,341.95 will be collected in 2016.
Thank you.
Can we vote on all these at the same time?
This was, can we do that? Okay. Do we have to read each title, or what?
Yes, if you read each title, then you could do a vote on all three.
Okay. So, Joanna, do you want to read the other two?
Sure. So, the title for CR 128 is a resolution certifying delinquent nuisance abatement charges to the Adams County Treasurer for collection pursuant to CRS Section 31-20-105. And CR 129 is a resolution certifying delinquent water and sewer charges to the Adams County Treasurer for collection pursuant to CRS Section 31-20-105.
Thank you. All right, discussion?
I just have a question for maybe Joanna, I'm not sure, or David, one of you. So, we certify these, they get sent out to the county, the county charges a 1% fee. If the resident wants to come in after these have been certified and come in and pay us the charge directly, is that a choice? Or do they have to go through the county to be able to do that?
Once the accounts are certified to the county, the resident must pay the county directly, and then it's permitted to the city. There is some time in between tonight and when we have to have that final list of accounts submitted to the county, so we will take payment directly from the resident so that they can avoid that 10% charge up until, you know, the very last moment, because we want to avoid that as much as possible. But once we submit the list, they do have to pay the county directly.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I'll close that vote, and CR 128, 129, and 127, excuse me, they all pass unanimously.
Thank you. Next is CR 130.
A resolution approving a professional services agreement between the city of Northland and J&amp;T Consulting, Incorporated, for the citywide minor drainage program.
Move to approve. Second?
Mayor, councilmember, staff has been working for a number of years on a citywide assessment of some of the main minor drainage issues in the streets. As you know, we have about 110 miles of street system and about 20 miles of storm drainage piping. Therefore, most of the water goes over the streets, and over the years contours have changed, street grades have changed to some degree in some areas, and created minor nuisance. As part of the, one of the attachments, the council number in front of you, you've got, you have quite a list of areas here that we were proposing to have a consultant look at, get some concept solutions to those problems, and some early cost estimates. So, tonight, staff is proposing the council, or recommending the council award this contract to JT Consulting Group to perform that work.
Thank you. Discussion? Hearing none?
Mayor?
Yes.
Can we, can you give us an explanation of what this exactly is? We have the citywide minor drainage program. For our residents, can you explain what this contract is really doing, what the program is?
Well, I guess as a small example, if there is, you know, ponding on a road where you don't have proper drainage in a storm event, that can cause, you know, potentially safety to the people driving on the roadway. What we're doing, what we're asking the consultant to do is go out to these locations, which have been identified by staff, and do an assessment of those locations for possible solutions to prevent water from ponding on the road and get drainage off the roadways in a better, more efficient manner.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I'll close that vote, and CR 130 passes unanimously.
Thank you. I will now recess the regular council meeting and bring to order Mayor on the licensing board. Joanna, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Downing?
Here.
Mayor Protem, Carol Dodge?
Here.
Councilmember Snessinger?
Here.
Councilmember Malika?
Here.
Councilmember Wayne Dodge?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Carrico?
Here.
Councilmember Whitman?
Here.
Councilmember Winnicky?
Here.
Thank you. Next would be approval of minutes from October 12th, 2015. Has everyone had a chance to look at them?
Move to approve.
Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote. Please vote.
Never mind, sorry.
Okay.
I'll close that vote and the motion to approve the October 12th, 2015 minutes passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is a public hearing for the transfer of ownership of Botanicare LLC to Be Good Ventures LLC. So, I will now open the hearing on the application for transfer of ownership from Botanicare LLC to Be Good Ventures LLC for the premises located at 11450 Cherokee Street, Units A1 through A7, Northland, Colorado 80234. The Northland City Council, acting as the local licensing authority, has jurisdiction to conduct this hearing pursuant to Sections 18-14-19 and 18-16-21 of the Northland Municipal Code. The procedure to be followed in this case will be as follows. City staff will provide a brief summary of the matter. Be Good Ventures or their legal counsel will present any evidence in support of the application for a transfer of ownership and any other person in support of the application may testify. Any persons opposing the application may then testify. The applicant may then submit any rebuttal testimony. All witnesses will be placed under oath by the city clerk and may be cross-examined by any party, counsel for any party, or members of the city council. Are there any objections to the jurisdiction of the city council over the form or substance of these proceedings? Hearing done. Mr. Hoffman, you may proceed.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. As the mayor indicated, this is a public hearing on a transfer of ownership of a dual licensed premises, so a medical marijuana and a retail marijuana license. This authority set it for a public hearing at your last meeting and it's been properly noticed. The, ultimately, the determination by the licensing authority tonight is to eligibility and qualifications of Be Good Ventures LLC as the applicant for a transfer of ownership. Under your code and under state law, for a transfer of ownership, it is the eligibility and qualifications that are at issue. There were some questions when this council set this for a hearing as to the timing of some events, and so I'm going to just go through some of the major events that triggered this because, as you are aware from the October 12th meeting, this is as a result of litigation between Be Good Ventures LLC and Botanicare, the current licensee. So, on April 25th, 2015, there was an order of judgment in the trial court in favor of Be Good Ventures and against Botanicare on several claims. On June 4th, 2015, there was a, basically a final judgment entered on the original order. On June 22nd, 2015, Botanicare appeared in front of this body and sought a modification of premises at a public hearing, which you granted. On June 25th, the district court, the trial court, entered another order that basically acknowledged that transfers of ownership don't just happen, they have to go through a process, including getting state and local licensing authority approval. So, essentially, the court placed all of the documents in the court registry as of that date and said, "You need to go forward and comply with the court order." And then one, actually two additional facts that certainly I was unaware of as of October 12th, and that is, on July 16th, Botanicare filed a notice of appeal, which they are certainly entitled to do. That appeal is pending. And then on October 15th, so 11 days ago, the Court of Appeals denied a motion for a stay. In other words, Botanicare sought to have any proceeding stayed during the pendency of the appeal, that was denied. So, that means that the trial court's order and the transfer proceedings are free to go forward. It's my understanding that folks from Be Good are here tonight. I think there's folks from Botanicare as well. It's, through your public hearing process, the Be Good Ventures folks have the burden of proving they're qualified and eligible. You have various documents in your packet that I would ask that be admitted that are essentially the application documents, all of the backgrounds. And then you also have a confidential legal memorandum that identifies the criteria for you to consider tonight. And with that, I think it's probably the floor for Be Good.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I'm going to ask, who will we testify? So, if everyone that's going to testify would stand, and then I'll have Joanna so that we don't have to stop the proceedings and we just can go ahead and she can administer the oath right away. So, is there, everybody that's standing is going to be speaking today? All right. Yes? Okay? Everybody here? Okay. Please go ahead.
So, if you're going to provide testimony, you'll raise your right hand? So, do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. First, we'll have Be Good Ventures or their legal counsel perform, testify, or both, however you want to do it.
Hello?
Right.
I sign this first?
Please.
I must tell you, I don't publicly speak.
Neither do we.
So, what we're asking is that you'll present any evidence in support of your application for transfer.
I'm sorry?
To, to give or present any evidence in support of the transfer, that's what you're...
And I should tell you, I'm old and I don't hear very well and I'm sorry about that.
It's good.
Okay, my name is Richard Pfeffer. I'm the managing partner of Be Good Ventures. And I understand I'm supposed to tell you why we're qualified. And I guess the best thing I can say is, we have two dispensaries now. We've had one for over six years. And we have two grow facilities. We have, I believe, eight licenses, is that correct, Neil? Six in Denver and two in Colorado Springs. We've never, ever been fined or penalized in any fashion for anything. We've always been a good neighbor. We've never had a complaint from anybody, not a neighbor, not a governmental agency, not anybody has ever complained about us. We've run a difficult business very carefully. We're not perfect. We have had the fire department tell us they liked some things corrected. We immediately correct them. We make sure we understand what they want. We get it exactly the way they want it. They come back in, they check it, it's fine. They love us because we do what we're supposed to do and not everyone in our business does. I can tell you that at a meeting where we were doing something at the M.E.D., the investigator was also an inspector who went around and saw different grow facilities, and he announced to everybody in the room that our grow facility was the most compliant facility he'd ever been in. We really do everything we can to be as compliant as we possibly can be. I don't know what else to tell you about our company, but you can ask me anything you want. If you want to know about me as the manager, you'll have to pardon me for self-promotion, but I'm a real estate broker, commercial real estate broker for 38 years. I've had a Colorado Securities Broker Dealers License. I've had an insurance license. I've had a mortgage broker's license. I've had various companies in the past. I'm the founder of the City of Longtree. I was on the Park Meadows Metro District Board. They appointed me to Sentinel, which was a southeast transportation management organization which negotiated with the federal government for T-Rex funding, and we got that funding. Any questions?
Is that the end of your testimony, as far as the support for...
It's all I know to tell you about us that I can think of. If you'd like to know anything more, I'm happy to tell you anything you'd like to know.
Are there any questions? Kim?
Thank you for coming this evening. You've just listed some of your qualifications for the work that you've done with municipalities and districts, and with all of that, I would believe that you would be pretty well versed in local licensing issues and local ordinance issues and things like that. At the last meeting, there was some concern about that there was no notification or that the process for getting a license in Northland may not have been understood or known by your organization. Can you just address that and let us know how those things slipped through the cracks and why, when the business was doing things and representing themselves here, that you weren't involved in any of those discussions?
Well, the, I have a partner, Neil, who is really in charge of all the compliance issues. But, we had only dealt, we dealt with two other cities and what we had always done is ask them what is required and then we do what they say. We don't have lawyers doing these things. Actually, we have not been able to afford to do that. We've had to spend a lot of money fighting a lawsuit for three years. We're close to the line. We make a profit, but it's small. We still have things we'd like to improve about our business and we need more money to do that. So, we try to, and we have nothing to hide, so we don't feel we need lawyers to come in and maneuver. We just tell you whatever you want to know and we give you everything that you ask for and that's always been fine in the past. And I guess we didn't realize that there's something more formal or that takes an attorney to do or that, Neil did his best, I'm sure, to try and satisfy everything that was required, but...
Okay. Any other questions?
Did you know about the Botanicare on application to expand at the time they were expanding?
No, I did not, and I will address that. My feeling is, if that was done without proper disclosure, I'm perfectly willing, if we are approved as an owner, to retract that and start over and go through the procedure again in order to acquire it. I think that's unfair and, you know, I didn't know, we knew nothing. This is a hostile, a very hostile situation. We still know nothing.
Okay, thank you.
You know, we know something. We get to look at the books now, but we have no control. We're not allowed by the M.E.D., by the Colorado statute, it is against the law for us to exercise any control whatsoever over that company until they approve us and you approve us. So, we're just here saying, would you like to know what I'll tell you?
Carol?
So, to feed off that a little bit, I appreciate that you said that you would retract it and go back and apply. I don't know legally if they can do that, but I definitely appreciate it because this is my biggest concern. Also, that we gave them those premises under the pretense that they would be doing CDB, lab work, freight. It wasn't just a whole open grow operation, which was kind of what we were concerned with because we didn't want you coming in and doing an allowance in there that we weren't going to allow. So, I guess that's something, if you do come back to get a license to take over the rest of those units, however that's going to happen, I would be, I would want to stay with what we originally set to use those premises for.
We're happy to comply with whatever the City of Northland would like. We're, our history is not only doing whatever we're asked by governmental authorities, but taking into consideration what our neighbors think. You know, our first store is in West Washington Park, and I don't know if you know that neighborhood in Denver, but a lot of, right next to us is a coffee shop that serves breakfast and brunch on the weekends, and they have tables and chairs out front. And a lot of people bring their kids there. So, we don't have a sign because we're next door and we don't want somebody to have to explain to their six-year-old something that they don't think the six-year-old is ready to understand. So, we just have our name in small letters on the glass and small little white letters just our name. There's no marijuana leaf, there's, you know, we're very conservative. We've invited you all to come see our store. We thought that would be very helpful because it is really nice. We blend in with that neighborhood. We do everything we can to be a good neighbor and we're going to do whatever we can to make you happy. We are not money grubbing. I mean, you're going to find, we're not. That's not our, profit's not our biggest thing. We're very good to our employees. We're building a business where people can work and have a good life. And that's what we're trying to do, is what we've always tried to do, and I have employees who can tell you that.
Thank you. Any other, yes?
Well, when we were looking at some background information that we've been given, I know everybody has a past and it looks like at one point in 2004 that you had a felony. There's a listing of a...
Me?
Yes, a listing of a felony here. Is that wrong? Is that wrong that I'm seeing here about synthetic narcotics?
Yes, wrong.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that. I'm glad to hear that because that concerned me greatly at 52% ownership. So, it said that there was arrest with Douglas County Sheriff's Office in May of 2004. So, for...
I had a DWAI, is what I had.
Okay. And that was in 2003 and nothing since, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and no synthetic issues with narcotics?
No.
Okay. I don't know why we have that here, but we do. Okay, thank you. I'm glad that isn't the case.
Okay. Any other discussion, questions?
I think, just a quick comment because I'm going to piggyback on the comment about the expansion and that license extension. And I just really need to reiterate, and I said it to your partner when he was here, you know, one of the concerns that we all had, we expressed that in the expansion, and we had residents that had voiced concern about that expansion. And the issue I have is that the Hacketts spent a considerable amount of time making some promises to those residents to be good neighbors and to be involved and to address some of the concerns residents had about the area over there. And so, my expectation to you, should this be approved, is that you carry through on that and that you find some way to connect with those residents over there that have had some issues.
Okay, does anyone know, is there a record of what those concerns are?
I'm sure that can be addressed to you.
We would be more than happy to. The last thing we want is unhappy people living near us. That's the very last thing we want. Well, it's the second one last. Unhappy city council members are probably worse.
All right, is there any other questions for Mr. Pfeffer? Okay, well, thank you, and we'll be talking to you again. Okay, is there anyone, okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak in support of the application? In support of the application?
Yes, please.
Okay.
So, my name is Adam Foster and I'm the lawyer for Sherri Hackett. And I just wanted to say a few words about the status of the appeal right now because I listened to the audio from the meeting on the 12th and provide a little clarification on that.
Excuse me, is this, is this a support?
Yes, it is.
All right, go ahead.
And, you know, there is an effective court order that said that Ms. Hackett should cooperate with the transfer process and that's what she fully intends to do. In the appeal, though, it is important to note that we are asking the Court of Appeals to reverse Judge Lemon's decision and to hold that Ms. Hackett should be able to keep her business. But, I wanted to mention that there was a lot of ambiguity back in June about how the parties were supposed to obey the court's order. And so, as Mr. Hoffman correctly pointed out, there were actually three orders that came down between April and June 25th that clarified what the court wanted and what Judge Lemon was looking for as far as the transfers. I don't think the court was initially familiar with the transfer process. And so, it wasn't really until that June 25th order came down that the parties had guidance on how they were supposed to comply to that, with that order. So, during that period of time, there was a lot of ambiguity and Ms. Hackett's going to testify too, but I think she was basically just very concerned about not doing anything to violate the court order. Now, when she heard the testimony of the 12th meeting, it was obvious that the council was disappointed and that the council was concerned, and she'll speak to that. But, she sure did not want to do anything that the council would find as deceptive, but it was really just because she genuinely did not know where the case stood procedurally. There was a motion to reconsider in the trial court because we truly do believe that we have solid legal grounds for the appeal. And then there was a motion to stay execution of the judgment in the Court of Appeals. The Court of Appeals very rarely grants those motions and they denied this one. This one was no exception. And so, right now, as Mr. Hoffman said, the transfer can go forward, but up until October 15th, procedurally, there was still some ambiguity in that regard. I did also want to mention that the Hacketts still do have the intent to continue to provide these high CBD strains. They can be very hard to get on the market. There's not as much of a market as the recreational strains. But, we do have some patients here who they've helped who would be willing to talk about how the high CBD strains have benefited them and how it's really made a difference in their lives, and that continues to be the Hacketts' focus. So, with that said, Sherri did not get notice of the meeting on the 12th. She would have been here if she would have had that and would have been happy to answer your questions. And she was a little bit surprised with that because there are two parts of the order. There's also supposed to be a 20% transfer of Be Good to her, and her preference certainly would have been to go in with Be Good and be here and be able to answer all the questions. And so, she was, well, disappointed that she wasn't able to do that, but she is here to do that, but she is here today. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys have, and she also is going to say a couple of words and would be happy to answer questions.
All right. Are there ques-
Yeah, I do. So, when's the timing of the, when's the appeal case?
Yeah. So, the district court hasn't sent the record up to the Court of Appeals yet. There's a transcript, and it was a, it was a three-day trial, and so, they're transcribing that transcript. When that's sent to the Court of Appeals, that triggers all of the briefing deadlines. The briefing usually takes approximately three months, and it's probably approximately three to six months from the time that the briefing closes until the Court of Appeals issues its decision. Basically, it's kind of a slow process. We could get a decision as soon as maybe six months. It could take as long as a year. And so, I think that realistically, that's the window that I would expect to see a decision in.
My part B to this is for Cory then. So, what happens if we approve the license tonight? They take over tomorrow, whenever that is. I don't know how soon it is. And then the court comes back and reverses the decision. What happens then? Are we the ones that threw it out in the middle and?
So, under the existing court orders, this process of the transfer is specifically contemplated, and the Court of Appeals specifically denied the request to stop it. There's two approvals that are required. So, it's, the first one is this body, and if you approve it, it then has to go to the state. So, they still need both approvals. Assuming they get both, and if the Court of Appeals reverses, then they would come back for an application for a transfer. And you would have to determine, again, the eligibility and qualifications for the entity that would be transferred to, in this case, Botanicare. So, you would have to go through a transfer of application process.
So, are we jumping the gun then?
No. You are complying with the court order.
Yeah, we're complying with the court order, but it sounds like we're stepping on everybody's feet, and they're stepping on ours. I mean, it's going back and forth and back and forth. When it's, you know what, it seems to me, never mind.
You are, under the court order that is in effect today-
Right.
And that the Court of Appeals determined not to get in the way of, you're obligated to act on the transfer.
And if you didn't, then you would be liable to be sued.
If you were to approve the transfer, that's one option. If you were to deny the transfer, Be Good would have to make a determination whether to appeal that denial to the district court.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Carol?
So, it was my understanding that with this court order, the Hacketts weren't to be involved in the operations of the facility any longer. Is that correct?
That is incorrect.
Okay.
There is no court order. And in fact, what the court ordered is that the Hacketts would be 20% owners of Be Good. So, specifically, the court order contemplates them being owners of Be Good, but there was nothing that said that they were not permitted to be involved in the business. They have been continuing to serve their patients. That's really the priority, is to serve the medical patients because they do have products and services that other businesses are not offering. And so, what they would like the council to do is to permit them to still be able to take care of their patients.
And tonight's application is only for the transfer. What would be contemplated, as I understand it, under the court order, is a subsequent application for a 20% interest in Be Good's license if you approve the transfer. And that would be a subsequent action by this council and a subsequent process.
At a different hearing?
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
So, it's not part of this-
It is not part of tonight's application. The only application is the transfer to Be Good.
100% transfer.
So, for clarification, that means that the Hacketts would be, then become employees of Be Good if they're going to be staying involved because you've already stated that they plan to stay involved and continue to give care for their patients?
That's certainly their goal. You know, the court order did not say one way or the other if they would still be employees. And so, I think that would be something in the first instance that the parties would have to talk through amongst themselves. But their goal very much is to continue to be able to serve their patients. The one statement I wasn't entirely sure about, although certainly, you know, Mr. Hoffman will advise the council, I don't know that the court order explicitly obligates the council to do anything or not do anything, but certainly, that's, you know, Mr. Hoffman's job to advise the council, and I'm not trying to second-guess it. But my reading of that order is that the council isn't obligated on the terms of that order to do anything.
They're required to act on a transfer application, which was submitted pursuant to the court order.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
When does this go to the state for approval?
Well, there's been a meeting with the state already about the transfer, and I believe that the state is waiting to hear back from the local authority to give final approval of the transfer, is my understanding.
They're waiting on the city here?
I believe that's accurate.
So, it's, we handle it first?
You do, but it's my understanding, in this case you do, but it's my understanding that the state's application process is independent of the city. So, this may be one factor, but they are also behind, as I understand it, and they're processing all applications, not just this one.
I think that's accurate.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in support of the application?
Support?
Well-
I don't know.
I'd say it's support. I mean, the court told us to help, you know, move the application forward, so I'd say it's support.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Sherri Hackett, current owner of Botanicare. And first and foremost, the thing that I would like to address with city council is, I'm sorry that we have to go through all of this. I am truly sorry that I was not able to be here on the 12th. I would have been here to help explain this. I didn't get that opportunity, and I apologize for that. I also would like to bring to your attention that, you know, every time I have been before you, I've been here to do the betterment of this industry, to help the patients, to help the community, which is something I still strive very hard to do. And I will always do the very best I can for our community and for the patients that I serve. In the five years that we have been in Northland, it has been a great relationship between us and you all. We have tried to do everything we can to support the community in every way we can. Four out of the, three out of the last four years, we've been nominated for the People's Choice Award. Haven't won it as of yet, but that doesn't mean that can't come, which just kind of bodes to the fact that we are doing everything we can and our community is reflecting that to you by that vote, to let you know that we are doing everything that we can. And per the change of premise, that had already been pre-applied for. It's something that we did during the renewal process and tried to make sure that we had everything to you. When we were here the, on the 22nd of June, at that point, we were here to do everything we could to keep the business viable, to make sure that it was moving ahead the way we felt like it should. I've always believed from the beginning of this whole lawsuit and everything that has gone on, that we will prevail. And I believe that we still will through the appeal process and that we will be able to operate in the best ability that we can and be able to serve our patients. And yes, we are planning to grow CBD in those last units. That's what I brought before you, and that's what I intend to do with that area. We have done nothing but try to make more medicine because, like I explained to you before, it's harder to yield those plants than it is a high THC plant. And that's part of why we wanted the extra space to be able to do that. And we fully intend to do that. As of right now, I have put that construction on hold, waiting for this proceeding to go through. I haven't submitted permits as of yet. That doesn't mean that I may not go ahead and try to do that because I want to do the betterment for my community and the betterment for the business. And if, in fact, I end up operating and running this particular dispensary, I will do it in the same manner I have as I have in the last five years. I just wanted to apologize that if, for some reason, you felt like I was being disingenuous on the 22nd of June, I was not. I wanted to do everything I can to better this business for the patients that I serve. And that was my full intent, was to do that, and it still is today. I am trying to do everything I can to abide by the court's orders, be respectful. And it gets very confusing, I have to tell you. I would never be disingenuous or not let you know something that was happening in advance if I thought I could. And I surely would have brought this to you before this if I thought I could. My final orders came on the 15th of October. On the 12th, I didn't know those answers. I couldn't have even answered them, but I would have done my very best if I would have had the opportunity to be here. Other than that, all I want to say is that I really hope that justice prevails here. Thank you.
Thank you. Do they have questions? Carol?
So, you're trying to say that you weren't being disingenuous when judgment was made on April 25th and a final judgment entered on June 4th, that you knew of, that they wanted to give your business to Be Good, but you still came in front of us not telling us this information, and that's not disingenuous in any way to you, that we weren't informed that this was going on?
At that time, I did not have all the answers from the court yet. I knew it was going on, but you didn't ask me about that case, and so therefore-
We didn't know about it.
I get that. I am trying my hardest to explain to you where I was at. I was in a really bad spot. I was trying my hardest to make sure I told you everything. I was told by the judge, "Do not talk to your employees. Do not talk to your patients. Do not talk to the landlord. Do not talk to anybody that would hinder this case." So, therefore, I felt like I couldn't talk to you. I felt like I was not supposed to talk to you. I would have told you if I thought I could have, but I didn't know that I could. I surely would have told you if I thought I could have. I have never not told you anything that's going on from the very beginning. I have always told you the truth. I have always told you everything that I know and that I could tell you at the time. I would not ever not tell you if I thought I could. I honestly believe that. I know I did that. I did everything in my power to make sure that I did everything the judge ordered me to do.
I think the judge was probably trying to protect the integrity of the business so that whoever was going to take over wouldn't lose the customers and the employees and all of that. But still, to me, as far as your ownership of relaying that to us, or even, I don't even know why you didn't sit back and go, "Maybe I shouldn't go forward with this at this point." It kind of boggles my mind still. And I really still do believe that you are being disingenuous with us. And we've given you a lot of leeway and been, I think, very cooperative with you along the, you know, the road of your whole entire business. And I feel like we were treated pretty badly after all of that, so.
I don't believe that I treated you badly, and I truly, truly apologize if you feel that way. I honestly, honestly, never tried to not tell you. I thought that I was not able to tell you, and at that point, I didn't even know all of the answers. I didn't know because the judge hadn't even given all of the final orders until the 25th of June. So, I didn't have all the answers yet from her. So, until I got all of the answers, I don't know what I was supposed to tell you, nor would I have ever, ever told you something that I should have. I didn't know what to do. I'm doing everything I can by the court's order to make sure. I want to keep this company. I want to be here at the end. I don't want you to think that I was trying to trick you or that I was trying to do something that I wasn't supposed to. I want to be here when it's all over. I want to treat the customers that I am treating. I want to make sure that I do everything I can by this community, including your respect and your trust in me because honestly, I would never, ever, ever lie to you. Never would I. And I was not trying to be disingenuous. Honestly, I truly was not, and I apologize to each and every one of you if, for some reason, you felt like I was tricking you, not telling you something, but I was told to make the business viable, and I was trying to make it grow to everything that I wanted it to be, even if it meant that I have to turn it over to Be Good's eventually. I'm still a 20% owner. I have no reason not to tell you the truth because I'm still going to be there in the end. I still own 20% if this court order goes through.
It doesn't show that you have 20%. As of tonight, it wouldn't say that. It said this gentleman would be 100%. That was a question I asked, and you, until you come back then, and you have another hearing then, after another hearing, but after, if it passes tonight, then you wouldn't have 0% actually. The way I understand it, is that correct, Cory?
That is. They'd have to have a subsequent application on the 20%.
Are you finished then, or?
And that's kind of what the judge had asked us to do, was to do them both simultaneously, to do the 20%, and that's why I'm rather surprised that they didn't have my 20% on this application. I understand logistically why it is the way that it is, but I thought that we should have come in here together, presented this to you together, and they didn't even inform me of the meeting.
And my thinking is hindsight, always better. But looking back at it, and you had your application in June, probably the smart move would have been if the judge said, "Don't talk about it. You're in a court case you possibly could lose." And now, at that point, you kind of knew you were going to lose, actually. Probably should have withdrawn your application for the expansion at that time. That would have been the smart move to do. As of today, the way the sun shines right now, how do those three bays sit? They sit vacant, correct?
They sit vacant, yes, sir.
So, you borrowed money from this gentleman to do your expansion, is that correct?
The money that was borrowed from him, that was a loan to me, was in 2012. It was not now.
Not for the expansion?
Not for the expansion.
Somehow I read that into that was part of the expansion, I guess, okay?
No, no. This was monies that were spent way back, and the loan was back in 2012.
So, if the transfer approves tonight, if it does, and you don't have 20% tomorrow, what stops this gentleman from just firing you tomorrow then, and thinking that you'll be working with people?
I don't know what stops him from doing that. I do know that we still have to go through the state approval-
Okay.
-before that he can take over. And I've already, I've got an application in there for my 20%. That's why I don't understand why I have to wait to do another hearing for my 20% here. But if that's what I need to do, then that's what I need to do is to-
Is the 20% involved in the state hearing? Yeah, correct.
Yes, it is.
It is.
Both entities have to approve the transfer, and both entities have to approve the 20%.
But is theirs at the same time or not?
I don't know how the states process, processing the application.
I can tell you they were all submitted at the same time.
I only know what the city reacts to, and the city has the transfer application.
And you, and you're pretty certain that it's in at the same time?
Yes. To the best of my ability, yes, sir.
Is that a yes or a no?
The two portions of the state application were submitted at the same time, yes, sir.
Sorry.
I have a question for staff. On page three, it's the notice of this public hearing.
That's public record, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, that's public record, and so, that's the proper notice that we're going to have a meeting on this?
The notice is for the hearing that was set on October 12th. I think what the testimony was, is that the Hacketts didn't know about the October 12th meeting on the transfer.
I think the testimony tonight's been that she wasn't aware of the meeting tonight as well.
Oh, no. I was aware of the meeting tonight. I apologize.
All right. Any other questions?
Joy?
Oh, go ahead.
So, just for clarification, I have two clarifying. These court orders, are those public record?
As far as I know, they are not under seal.
As far as I know, they are not under seal, so yes.
Okay. So, that would be one concern. It's public record, so it could have been told to us that these things were going on. The second one was on the public hearing notices, where all are those posted in this maybe, or sent? Joanna or Cory?
They're posted on the premises. So there was a notice that was posted at the Botanicare site on Cherokee Street, and then notice was provided to the applicant, and I believe Ms. Hackett as well.
I never received a notice except for the notice on the premise was the only one I received.
Oh, so that goes back to, if there was a notice on the premise, you've been operating the premise, how did you not know that there was a meeting?
The notice was for the 20th, the notice was for tonight.
Right, but the previous, there wasn't a notice for the previous?
No, there was no posting on the premise for the October 12th meeting.
Thank you for the clarification on that.
All right. Last one.
Well, so bottom line is, right, this is just kind of the nutshell on how I'm seeing this, is you borrowed a large sum of money from Be Good, haven't been able to pay it back, and now the court has decided to give them that asset and possibly a percent back to you, possibly. So I mean, do you have any other means of paying them back and when that has come back at the, at the court, you know, court?
Yeah.
Excuse me, is that part of the application?
Well, I'm just saying that, I mean, it's a transfer of assets because money hasn't been paid back. So that's what it looks like to me.
That's what the court proceedings were about.
Right.
I think what the mayor is asking is tonight, the, what the council should be looking at is the qualifications and eligibility of Be Good Ventures LLC. That's what's relevant to the determination tonight.
And just to help me out, could you look at these two pages for me, please? I want Cory to look at them. These are the ones that actually indicate that there was at least an arrest record for a felony from Mr. Piper. And that bothers me.
An arrest is not relevant, it's a conviction and so-
A conviction, so that's the difference here. It was arrest but not a conviction. Okay, because I can't in good faith, you know, vote yes to transfer or whatever if somebody does have a felony even though I realize that it was an arrest, not a conviction. Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I have a question for the applicant.
And to answer your question, I did try to pay him back, he did not accept the money and that was back in 2013.
I have a question for the applicant. So are you, I guess, are you for or against this transfer? Because I know you came up in support of the transfer, I guess I need to know, are you for or against it?
I have to do everything I can by a court order to make sure that I do not impede this, so at this point, I can't answer that because I don't want to say anything that would jeopardize this. I think that each one of you need to make up your own mind as to-
But you're testifying, Sherri.
Yeah, but she has, well, if she didn't testify, it wouldn't be that big of a deal. But since she is here testifying, she has to be proactive. She has to be in favor of it.
Well, I'm appealing the decision.
All right. Are there any more questions for Sherri? All right. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Thank you for everything. And once again, I really do apologize, I would never, ever try to trick you. I like my city, I like being here, I like all of you. Thank you.
Are there any other persons that want to speak in support of this application?
Can I say one more thing?
Pardon me?
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
The documents that I handed out to you are all affidavits of the patients because I wanted you to truly know how many people I am treating and what we're treating them for and that we really are trying to practice the medicine and make sure people get well with this. And so I wanted to show good faith that we really are doing what we said we were doing. Thank you.
All right. Again, is there anyone else that would like to speak in support of the application? Are there any persons here opposing the application? If there's anybody opposing it, you need to come up and speak.
And just so the council is aware, as it's considering any testimony in opposition, it needs to relate to the qualifications or eligibility of the applicant for the transfer.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joan Johnson Porter. I'm not quite sure what that instruction means in terms of what I can and wish to let you know about tonight. Because while I've worked with attorneys, I don't play one on TV and I'm not one in real life.
So the question is, are you opposing the application for transfer?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
So you'd rather have Botanicare run the store than?
This may seem like a strange place to start, but I will tie it up quickly. In 1973, I was killed in a car accident. My Volkswagen hit another Volkswagen at about 100 miles an hour combined speed and I was killed in the accident and sustained a skull fracture. I came back with profound amnesia down to the, it was not Saturday night at the movies. I had to relearn how to choose what to eat first on my dinner plate. I had to relearn how to count out four items instead of three or five. I started on my journey back because for the most part, my family abandoned me and I got next to no medical treatment, I came back on my own. When I met Dr. Albert Ellis in the early 80s, because a friend of mine was writing a book with him, and he had forwarded some of the work that I had developed in order to be able to find my socks again, he said it was the first original work he'd ever seen in psychology and cognitive science. And of course, it had to be original because I didn't remember anything from before the car accident. So I've spent the last 40 years relearning everything from how to count to four. And what I have come out with is what is now becoming called the physics of thought. I have one remaining problem. And that problem is a result of some medical treatment that I was given that turned out not to turn out so well. I have complex migraine syndrome. Complex migraine syndrome is not headaches. In complex migraine syndrome, vascular spasms cascade through your brain and cut off oxygen. For whatever period of time those spasms remain, you have stroke-like symptoms and damage. I have lost vision, I have lost speech, I have lost the use of my right leg, I have lost the use of my right hand, and I'm an artist, a writer, and a researcher. I have just completed the first year in two weeks of not being in the ER or the hospital for a complex migraine issue that causes mini strokes. Before that, from July until the end of September, I was in the hospital 10 times. I get terrible responses, deadly reactions, to the usual treatment that people are given for complex migraine. It's a very complex situation, not many people understand it, it's tough to treat, and the reason that I have been able to get through the last year and two weeks without a seizure, without losing my vision, continuing to regain my ability to speak, which is, while it sounds normal, I am still not up to where I used to be when I used to have a radio program. The reason is the CBD work from Botanicare. So while we're addressing all kinds of business issues and legal issues, I do want to bring to your attention the life issues. This is not about a business license in some ways. In some ways, it's about people's lives. The CBD from Botanicare is not the same as other edibles from other companies. I've tried others. While they mitigated the symptoms somewhat, they did not stop it or allow my recovery. The same way the CBD from Botanicare works. So while the legal issues may be sorting out, I am sure I am not the only person dealing with life-threatening seizures that may be without medication. If you approve this transfer, I am more than a little concerned. After 35 years of work and research, I am getting ready to publish next year. Part of whether I'll be able to do that or not is how many times I will end up in the hospital or not. And I would ask you to consider beyond the legal ramifications to the moral ones and the ethical ones and the things that matter to people when they get up in the morning. Now, I've been told that some of my work has already saved lives in the little bit that I've been able to do and in the research that I've been able to do. I'm going to ask you to join me. I save lives in my realm and in my work. I ask you to do the same. Thank you.
Wade, is there any questions, comments?
So, no, I'm sorry, Kim, go ahead.
So you've provided testimony on how the products help you. Why do you feel that this applicant is not appropriate for us to transfer the ownership to? I didn't catch that in what you've said. Do you have concerns with the way they operate their business, with the products that they use? What is your concern with their being a good fit for this company?
I only recently found out about this transfer. Had I found out about it a few weeks earlier, I could have answered that question a lot better. What I have heard so far, and the little bit of research that I've been able to do and I have not been able to fact-check it, is that when Be Good takes over a facility, they eliminate the medical marijuana part and they eliminate the CBD work. I don't know whether that's true or not, I do not know how to find that out with the tight timeframe that I had. What I have is concern to take the Hacketts out of Botanicare because it's their research and their original work that is made available only through products that are there at Botanicare and belong to them.
All right. Any other questions?
I just want to make a comment, and I appreciate your story, but you'd understand that a Denver District Court already heard all of the proceedings between the two parties and they made a decision that the transfer of ownership should happen. And unless there's a reason, I mean, I think the blame is more with the Hacketts and it's less with us because we have to make a decision based on that decision also and we're not really finding, I mean, I personally am not seeing why we shouldn't transfer it. So I just want you to understand that.
I do understand that. I worked with attorneys for years and I've worked in city councils and I have worked redeveloping areas of town. I do understand the legal issues. I also understand that sometimes that's not the whole story. And had I been in this a few months ago, it would not have been exactly this way, I assure you.
All right. Are there any other comments or questions? Thank you very much for coming. Thank you. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak in opposition of this application? Yes.
Hi, my name is Debbie Blue. I'm unusual here in that I've worked with the Hackett family and I worked side by side, I know their integrity, I know their ethics, I know it's the best job I ever had. Ironically, I kept getting sick, my fibromyalgia did not allow me to continue to go work. Five years later, I am their patient and I have been to many pot shops around town, probably yours too. And not one shop has the products or the way that you are treated, their approach is entirely different. And it has to do with the Hackett family and their integrity, and they want a family business. They just lost a three-generation steel erection company because the general contractors weren't paying their bills. They fought tooth and nail to keep their business going. What I know about the Hackett sisters is, maybe they got a loan, but there is no freaking way they would give away their family business, which they have been working hard on and working with you ever since it opened. It is truly, the products are unique, the approach is unique, the employees are unique. Should another company come run this, it's just going to be another pot shop and the medical patients, like myself, will not be served and we will have to use other means. Because I'm able to use medical marijuana, I am able to not take chemicals that are harsh, that have horrible side effects. I've been treated for fibromyalgia since 1993. I have taken medicines that have done awful things to me. But the good thing about medical marijuana and the high CBDs is it's not a good high, it's so your body can continue throughout their day. Right now, standing here, I wouldn't be here pain-free if I had myself. And it truly, I cannot tell you enough how amazing this family is, how dedicated they are, and how scrupulous they have run their businesses. Thank you.
Mayor?
Cory, I've got a question. If perhaps this body does not approve it, and the state doesn't approve it, what happens? I mean, you know.
Then Botanicare would continue to run it unless someone else takes action.
All right.
And I don't know what the court proceedings would do.
Okay. I was just, as I'm listening to this lady, I was just thinking through this.
But I would encourage you, while this evidence is very compelling-
Right.
-it's not relevant.
And that's what I-
That's what I was going to bring forward, you know, unless you have testimony in valid opposition of the application, we really, you know, I understand that you use the products and that you think you cannot get the products anyplace else, but what we're looking for right now is testimony only concerning the application, that this body does not want to hear about the use of the product. All right.
Yeah, they're scared.
All right.
They've been taken care of a long time, so they're worried and they're scared. And, real quick, Angelina is 15 months old and she's one of our senior babies. And Angelina, when she came to us, was having 20 seizures a day.
Did you hear what I said?
This is not relevant.
I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say is that you could ask Be Good, if anybody here would know how to medicate a patient.
Ms. Hackett, please. You heard what we said.
I was just asking for their qualification on treating somebody that needs the medicine. So maybe they could get up and talk about how-
Their turn will come again. Thank you very much. All right. Is there anyone that wants to speak about the application only? Not about the use of the drug, but about the application?
More specifically about the competency of the company that is taking over it.
That's right.
Not about the present company, but about is Be Good a, should we grant the license to Be Good? Is Be Good a good company, a legitimate company? That's the question, not anything concerning the use of marijuana or any other practices. It's strictly that. That's what, testimony should be limited to that stage and it must be.
Yes.
Are you in favor or against the transfer to Be Good?
I am against the transfer.
Is there something wrong with Be Good that you can tell us?
They said nothing about children, their qualifications, anything about children. They say that they follow the rules. Every company will follow the rules to keep their job, to keep their position. I've been with Botanicare for four months for this child right here. No one I have ever found knows any qualifications about how to treat children in any way. Most children are older.
Okay, well, this is not about the application. So, I'm sure that Be Good is going to address some of these during rebuttal. So if you have nothing more to say about the opposition of the application, then we'll give someone else a chance.
I was going to say is that the qualifications, I believe, should stay with Botanicare. They have the best qualifications I have ever found. Research, Google- Research, Google, anything, especially to treat young children, under the age of one.
Thank you.
And it's very hard to find.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else here that wants to speak in opposition? And that has only about the company now, the application.
I understand. My name is Chantel Hackett Smith. I work for this company. I support this company.
No, no, which, I'm sorry, which company are you working?
Botanicare. Yeah, Hackett.
Okay.
Sorry. This has been an emotional roller coaster through this entire application process. What I've seen this company, due to our company and the stress that it's put us under, I don't see a positive reaction coming from the transfer. A lot of what we've dedicated our time to is going to be degraded, is going to be taken away. You know, I don't know exactly how to say this, but I feel, I hate to put myself to be victimized. It's not the person I like to be. But since we have been in this arrangement with this other company, I have felt as I've been victimized and I don't want that to reflect onto the next company that takes over or however this ends up. And I want everyone to really understand that everything that we've done to dedicate ourselves to this and this industry and this outlook, I don't see that coming from this other company. We've, we're very focused and we're very in tune with these people in this community and I do not believe that these people have the integrity to do so, based on where I've seen and what I've heard in the industry. Unfortunately, only one of these gentlemen over here owns most of this company and I don't believe he's done anything to support it. I've heard other bad things about this company as far as them being close to schools and not moving. I'm not sure where the validation is in that, but these are things that I've heard and I want you guys to know what I've heard from being on the inside and seeing what they've done to us as a company. We haven't been able to expand because we are scared and we're hurt. Someone's come into our lives and taken something from us that we've worked really hard for. That's really all I can say.
I have a question. You said you felt victimized. In what way? Why, I mean, is there some specific?
It might just have to do with being in court in general or seeing my family be questioned, you know, maybe that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition?
Does anyone?
No, it's okay.
My name is Richard Porter. I am Joan's husband and literally the reason I'm able to stand here is because of Botanicare. So, I have a prejudice in favor of Botanicare. I also, it was 29 hours and 34 minutes ago, I even found about this meeting. So, I've not been able to do the research that I would normally do with this. I'm a businessman. I'm a real estate, I was a real estate developer in other life. I dealt with city councils. So, I'm hoping I can speak a little bit toward to your language. You're not a legal body. You do legal things and you have to comply with legal laws, but you're not attorneys. Like my wife says, we're not attorneys. We don't play fun on TV or in real life or anywhere else. But the special purview of both city councils in my experience has been that city councils have not only the luxury, but the duty to look beyond what is necessarily absolutely within the legal lines and do what's right for the community. It would not be right for this community to allow what is essentially a hostile takeover of Botanicare by someone who only has financial interests, demonstrated by the fact that when asked the question about the, excuse me, it was her, about the loan, the loan was offered to be paid off and declined. If they did that in the banking industry, the loan would be forgiven. That's the law in the banking industry. Apparently, it's not in this situation. Like I said, I might have time to do my real estate or research on this. So, it may be different than real estate. The new owners have not lived in the facility washing their hair and sick for two years trying to get this business off the ground, giving away needed precious medicine to the people that are most needful of it and least able to pay. Botanicare is that company.
Excuse me, Mr. Porter, we appreciate your stories and all of the work that's gone into it, but can you please address?
Yeah, I'm talking about character.
The actual qualifications of people.
Qualifications have to do with character.
Not with the good, what you consider the goodness of Botanicare, but we really need testimony specifically on the other, on the applicant's Be Good rather than Botanicare, please.
Yes, I'm speaking to that. It has to do with character. What kind of a person is one that would come in and do that kind of a thing just to take over? And what I understand, I'm not doing my homework, but this is not the first time that this has been done. And despite the, we're not in it for the money, there's no other reason for them to do what they're doing than for the money. And the Botanicaire special products, the CBD products, which is what you said, I heard one of the members up here say that the reason that you guys were enthusiastic or at least open to having them here is because they were working on the CBD medicine, not just getting a stoner's high. I feel like I hate the feeling of being stoned. That's why I like the CBD, because it doesn't affect you that way. Unless the qualification, the most important qualification that any owner could have is to serve the company, serve the, excuse me, the patients in this case of the company that the company serves. And I do not believe that the qualifications of the new owner are such that they will serve those patients and your community in that way. Speaking to the other gentlemen's comments about, well, if you approve this transfer, Be Good now has 100%. If you approve the transfer, I watch real careful to see if Be Good actually allows her that 20%. They might just be looking for the opportunity to close that door and shut them out completely. I have seen that happen over and over again in these type of meetings when well-meaning people like yourself do what looks like is legally required and end up screwing the business owner and consequently the patients. That's my concern about the character of the new owners. What will they do? They don't have the expertise or the knowledge to maintain the business and the factory in the way that it's going forward, which is so critical to the lives of people, not just, gee, I want to go get high. We're talking about babies that have seizures, multiple hundreds of seizures. The new owners are not qualified, I believe, to honor that legacy.
Can you address the qualifications?
The qualifications, do they have the ability to do the CBD drugs? They do not, which is the key of what you're talking about.
Do you know that?
I have not had the time to do that. Let them speak to their expertise.
Do you know that? Do you know that for sure?
I do not, that is not something that is knowable by anybody in this room. What is knowable is you can inquire him on his rebuttals about what is his qualifications to do CBD, which is the core of the Botanicare business long before they, the medical.
If you're talking about someone's qualifications, you need to explain exactly what you're talking about. You know, you just can't use a generic term and let it just.
I appreciate that. Like I said, I've had 29 hours and 40 minutes to, since I first found out about this occurring and I've done what I can in the meantime. He can certainly give his qualifications to do the CBD, which is the most important part of this whole transaction, is the CBD medicine.
All right.
Is he qualified? So, ask him that question. I can't speak to his qualifications.
All right. But you were actually speaking for him there for a while, saying he was not qualified.
I have seen nothing, heard nothing, hearsay, granted.
Hearsay doesn't work.
Hmm?
Hearsay doesn't work.
I understand. That's why I'm asking you to ask the questions and do the research yourself.
All right. Is there anything else you need to say?
I would say, yeah, you should disqualify, you should turn down this thing because if the appeal is later done, it's also, it's all going to be undone anyway.
All right. Is there anything else? Thank you.
Corey, transfer of ownership has nothing to do with, I mean, somebody could buy my sign company and they could do whatever they want with it. Transfer of ownership never said that they have to be Botanicare and operate in the way Botanicare operates. Is this correct?
That is correct. The qualifications and eligibility are set forth in your code. They're in your staff report. They relate to state law and local ordinance about what are disqualifiers for being eligible to hold a license. It's not whether or not someone offers CBD.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else, questions? Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition? And you've heard this, what this body is saying.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Alyssa List. I'm a current employee at Botanicare for the Hackett sisters. I'm opposing the application in regards to their qualifications. We are extensively trained on how to use CBD to help children, adults, elderly. Be Good's is not. They don't know how to use CBD.
How do you ask?
When they come in to observe, certain employees came to observe us for a while, they would ask us, they would take notes, how do you use this? How do you use that? We've never heard of this. So, it just leads us to believe that they don't have any, you know, qualifications for the CBD, so there's no need for it. Kill it all.
I think it's probably all the more reason to keep you guys employed.
Well, in regards to that, last week's hearing, it was stated that we would more than likely be downsized. Employees loyal, so to speak, to Sherry and Robin. He has his own employees or just hire new ones. It would cause complications for us to still be there. I feel that our jobs and our families are now in jeopardy. I have a husband who's a veteran who stays at home with our kids and I work. So, no, I don't feel that they are qualified to take over Botanicare and attempt to treat the patients that we treat and the children.
All right. Are there any questions? Thank you very much. All right. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition? All right. The applicant may submit rebuttal if you wish.
I'm not sure what I'm rebutting, but I do have some things that have been brought up that I'd like to make sure your understanding is correct. First of all, I sent a email to the city clerk or assistant clerk, I forgot who's got which title.
Lisa.
Lisa. And after, forwarded to the members of the council with all of the court rulings that were relevant, the judgments and so forth and quotes from it and pictures of the text that was the loan, it was a clear contract to purchase the company. And if you got it and read that, I don't know why anybody's talking about a loan. There was never a loan. It's been their position, there was a loan, but on the 7th of November in 2012, we did a contract, well, actually on the 6th, we shook hands on an agreement. And then on the 7th, I texted it to Robin and Robin texted back, yep, that's our agreement. I can't say anything major beyond that. This is the terms. Don't worry, we're not going to back out. We're partners. That's what it said. The judge ruled flagrant fraud. The judge ruled that none of their claims have any credibility. And let me clarify a few of the legal issues that are, that have been misrepresented and I think even somewhat by the attorney tried to mislead you without lying. He said that, yes, the application was submitted on the same day. Yes, they were submitted on the same day. There were two separate applications. The first application, and the judge wrote it that way on purpose. The first application was for Be Good to acquire 100% of Botanicare and the second application was for Cherie Hackett to acquire 20% of Be Good. And the judge, when asked by Hackett's attorney, why, you know, what happens if because of this case and the flagrant fraud, Cherie Hackett is not approved for ownership of Be Good? And the judge said, "Nothing," exact quote. So, these are two separate applications at the state. This is an application on acting on one of those state applications for Be Good Ventures, the company, to acquire Botanicare, the company. So, that's, I wanted to clarify that. There's never been a loan, applications are separate. By the way, we do cultivate a CBD strain, a very high CD strain, is it called, Harlequin? Harlequin. And we're happy to follow any prescription that the Hacketts have provided for any patient. And by the way, we only have medical, we don't have a retail establishment. Retail is the state's word for recreational. I'm sorry they chose that. But we don't, we don't have a recreational establishment. We only have medical establishments at this point. If you allow us to follow through on our acquisition of Botanicare, then we will have our first retail establishment. They have a retail establishment. We're happy to follow any of their prescriptions. They don't make any of those edibles that the lady talked about here. I'm telling you this not because it's relevant really to the application, but for your knowledge as to who we are and what we intend to do. Everything that they sell in an edible, they purchase and we can purchase the exact same edible from the exact same place. So, it's not going to impact the patients at all. By the way, we not only don't intend to fire people if they're not angry at us, I mean, there are some employees who may be angry at us. And if we are trying to manage people who are clearly displaying anger, obviously we'll have to let them go. But anybody who's not angry at us, I have spoken with their general manager and told him, it's our intention not to fire anybody. That is our intention, is to keep the business running primarily as it is to begin with and then slowly take the best of what we do and the best of what they do and make both of our businesses better. Let's see. We use IPM, Integrated Pest Management at our only, at our main grow facility. We just opened a very small grow facility in Colorado Springs and they're not on that yet. It took us almost two years, maybe a little longer, to get control of that, but that's how, you start with cultural things like keeping the plants apart and then you work on things like putting in insects that eat the bad insects and things like that and you work down a scale and keep things under control rather than using harsh pesticides that are bad for human beings to try and eliminate the pests. You let the pests live there, but in small enough quantities that they're not harmful to the plant. It's called integrated pest management. It's a horticultural principle that is preferable to pesticide use whenever possible. And we've been using that for about three years now on our main facility. So, we are community sensitive. We are culturally sensitive. We're sensitive to all of these things. But the main thing I wanted to tell you is that these are separate applications. They, this application tonight is, as you said, for us to acquire, for Be Good to acquire Botanicare. And if the med or any local jurisdiction turns down Cherie's application, just as if you turn down our application, we won't get it. If anyone turns down her application to acquire 20% of us, she won't get it. And there's nothing I can do about that one way or the other. I will say that my partner tells me that the last hearing, you were concerned about our hiring, about them working for us. And I will tell you that Cherie is very, very angry, very angry, and she's made it a little bit unpleasant when we have, in the very infrequent occasions when we have visited the facility. And I don't think we could exist in the same facility, but Robin has not been that way. I, if I'm going to tell you from my heart, I don't believe Robin ever wanted to do this. I believe Robin wanted to go through the transaction, but when her sister took that position. Now, I'm just telling you what I believe and this is from my heart. I believe when her sister took that position, she had to stand by her sister and I admire her for that, but she put herself in a very bad position to do so. And if you would approve it and if it were okay with you guys, I would keep Robin on as an employee. I would not fire her. That's just my personal, that's the way I feel. I've known that for a long time and I know what happened here, in my opinion.
All right. Questions? Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have a letter that was submitted by Ms. Johnson-Porter prior to the meeting, so I'd like to make sure that Council has, this still accompany her testimony?
All right.
And then, Madam Mayor, also just to clarify, you do have in your, in your, the record that was admitted as part of this hearing, the documents that the applicant was referring to, they were made part of your record and those were admitted, so that is part of the record.
Thank you. All right. Council, discussion?
Do you buy your edibles from someone else? You don't make them yourself?
No, we buy them.
I meant to the Hackett sisters. Just, yes or no, that's fine.
Yeah, some we buy and most of the CBDs, we tell them how to mix them so that we get the appropriate for each individual person. So, we have input on that, yes?
Thank you. So, a quick question here, Corey. If it was a no vote here tonight, would Northland end up in court? A yes or no?
I don't know what Be Good Ventures would do if you denied their transfer application.
But they have that option.
They do have that option.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I want to say just a few things, just how I feel and I have to say it. We have been more than accommodating to the Hackett sisters. We appreciate what they do with CBDs. We always have. We've always been on the side of that. That's never been the issue. I think it's unfortunate. the issue. I think it's unfortunate what went down between the two parties. Legally, the decision was made by a different court that said that this was a contract and it should be followed through. The Hacketts have an appeal in process. All I can say is, they're going to have to see out that appeal process and see how that happens. I just think it's an unfortunate business transaction that happened. But this really, this isn't our fault. It's not the city's fault. It's the entire fault of how you guys did business. And we have to make a decision that's good for Northland, so.
I couldn't have said that any better, Carol. I think that what you said is right on. I think that it's been really difficult for me tonight, because I think that a lot of this testimony has definitely tugged at my heartstrings. But we can't consider that. That's not what-- that's not our job, you know? And so, as much as I have sympathy and I get what the Hackett Sisters have done, we can't look at that. And that's not, that's not what we were elected to do. That's not what this body's for. You know, I agree, though. I think that it's put us in a difficult position. I think it's put the community in a difficult position, you know? But, yeah, that's, you know, I just wanted to put that out there. I think all of us have sympathy for it, but we just can't consider it, you know?
Right. And we have to look at what is the legal implications?
One thing I do have a question, though, for you, Corey, is, I know that the applicant has said that he would retract the expansion. Obviously, that he can say that, you know, all day, but what type of-- how do we, how can we enforce that?
There's, I think there's two outstanding issues, because when the draft resolutions were put in your packet, that was based on what testimony was anticipated, not knowing what would actually happen. The first issue is that you could certainly take their representation. They indicated that they would do so voluntarily and make it a part of your finding, and say that because they offered, you accept their offer, and that the modification of premises for units A1 through 3 is rescinded. You've heard testimony that work hasn't commenced, and so you could certainly do so. Secondly, if you desire to save the 20% discussion for another day, you can take out the portion of the proposed resolution that relates to the issue of untruthfulness and deal with that on the 20% night. And we could bring a, you know, a modified resolution to the next meeting. So, those are the two issues where frankly, the testimony has been at least somewhat different.
All right, did you have some?
I would personally, I would like that to be part of our finding, and so I'm not sure--
Both of those issues?
Well, the expansion issue, definitely.
Right.
Because I think that we owe it to our community, especially to people that were surrounding it, you know, because it was a difficult decision on our part, and, you know, I know we thought about it a lot.
One possibility is, you have a scheduled study session next week. I know that it has been council's desire not to have the new council have to make the findings based on this. And so, one possibility is to make a motion and then have a special meeting for the sole purpose of approving that resolution. It would be largely administrative. It would be reducing tonight's findings to a resolution. And so, you wouldn't have to approve either of the two draft resolutions in your packet, and could simply make the motion to direct findings to be made and have a one-item special meeting as your liquor-- as the, I'm sorry, the Marijuana Licensing Authority next week.
I'm fine with that. I think that's a good idea, really. All right, anybody else have any comments?
Are you talking about postponing everything, or just the 20%?
No, no, no.
No, so it would be to make a motion directing me to do findings, as you normally would. So, that's been the normal protocol. We put draft resolutions for tonight's meeting solely because this is your last regular meeting before the new council is sworn in. So, it would be to, you'd make a motion indicating the findings if you wanted to include the offer of the applicant to retract the modification of premise for units A1 through A3. And then, the other thing I suggested, because there has been controverted testimony on the issue of untruthfulness, is to simply defer that issue until the new application comes in on the 20% and deal with it then. And so, I could take the draft resolutions, modify it to that effect, and have it ready for the meeting next Monday.
I would request you do that. So, everybody else? Okay, all right.
So, if that, it needs to be a motion with a second, so that we can--
I need a second?
Second.
Okay. Please open the vote. And did you, are you typing? You ready?
I had a--
Oh, yes, go.
I had a comment. And maybe it's just a difference of philosophy and how I run, how I would run a business if it were me. If I hadn't been given an order of judgment in April, you can bet I'd have been watching that company like a hawk. I would have been knowing what they were doing. I would have been looking at applications. I would have been Google searching the heck out of them to know what was going on with the company that may be coming to me through a judge's order. So, again, maybe that's just a difference of philosophy in how I would run a business, as opposed to how you all run a business. I, you know, I am really concerned about this whole thing and what's going on, not just on Botanicare's side, but also on Be Good Ventures' side. I do feel like we've been blindsided by quite a bit of this from both sides, and it's not a good feeling. And I, I just have to say that I'm very, very disappointed in what has transpired between both of you guys, and how it's made the city look. We like our businesses to be above board, and this certainly hurts that in our community. And so, I'm just very disappointed in how all of this has happened.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
I guess I just have one question, too, about how this is going to work. So, tonight, if tonight we're voting on the transfer of ownership--
You're approving, you're approving the transfer and directing me to make findings of fact--
Okay.
--consistent with that approval.
Okay.
And then we'll approve it next week.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
So, it'll be no approval, actually, tonight, then, of the transfer?
Correct, correct.
I was going to make that clarification.
All right.
And actually, I go along with everything Kim just said there, too. I'm a little disappointed myself, so.
Is there any other clarification points or any other comments? All right, please open the vote.
The vote is open. Please vote. We'll close that vote. And the motion to direct the attorney to prepare findings approving the transfer of ownership application filed by Be Good Ventures LLC to be considered at a special meeting on November 2nd, 2015 passes unanimously.
Thank you. I will now adjourn the Marijuana Licensing Board to reconvene the regular council meeting, and we'll go to communications. Kim, you want to start?
Uh, not really.
You know, and I'm sorry for our residents that we had to act in this manner tonight, but it's really hard to do this job sometimes when we, when I feel like this. But on a more positive note, thank you to all the residents who came out for our Ward 4 meeting last week. We had a really good turnout. It was, it was nice to see that our candidates for Ward 4 were there and were able to visit with those who, those folks who came out. So, we really appreciate that. I think we ended up with about 45 people, Jean, something like that. The rain didn't keep anybody away, so it was really nice. And several of the other council members--
Excuse me.
Take that outside or something?
Take her out. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Kim. Okay.
Sorry about that. I was just trying to--
I know, all right.
Pretend like that wasn't happening. So, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief. So, again, just thank you, and thanks for the mayor and the council members who came. Marcy and Kyle came to hang out with us a little bit, too. I've heard, I didn't make it to Safe Street this year, but I've already had comments about how great it turned out. So, thank you all for going and attending, and thanks to the community for supporting another awesome event in our community. And finally, don't forget to vote. It's critical. Vote, vote, vote. You can only vote once, but please vote. Thank you.
I want to second the Safe Street Halloween. Julie and the kids went, and she loved it, and said she saw Carolyn Wayne there, and so, and man, did she come home with some candy. So, I'm happy about that. So, thank you for everyone that did that. I'm sorry I missed. I had to work, but I've heard nothing but good things as well. I also want to throw a little shout out, too. My nephews play for Northland Little League football, and both of their teams are in the championship this weekend. And so, I think that's kind of neat, because the littlest one, he's on the Northland Eagles. He's in the championship game. He's playing the other Northland team. And this is out of a lot of different, you know, Erie, and a lot of different communities are in this league. And so, and my other nephew's on the Northland Falcons, and he's in the championship game. And so, just seeing Northland represented, you know, is kind of neat. And they're doing some really good things with that league. And so, I don't know if Amanda's still here, but just the things they're doing is really neat over there. So, yeah.
Thanks.
So, congratulations. Go Eagles and go Falcons.
Yeah, you are divided, aren't you?
We were at Safe Street, and there was tons and tons and tons of kids. I didn't even know we had that many kids in Northland, but there was a lot of them there. They just never ended. It's just hallway after hallway of kids coming up. So, but we had a great time. So, PD did a great job. All the staff did a great job. So, it was a, it was a fun event.
I feel terrible. It was the first time in 10 years that I missed Safe Street Halloween.
We had a cardboard cutout of you.
I had doggy problems, so.
All right. Here, you have nothing? No? That's good.
Same thing, Safe Street, great job, PD department. It was very fun. The business breakfast, we had the Fourth Annual Business Breakfast. We were all there. It really went off quite well. I mean, without a hitch, as far as I'm concerned. So, it was great to honor all the businesses. We've got a lot of really great businesses here in Northland, so it was great to give them awards for their service to the community. And then, just an update on some happenings with the seniors. They will be electing new board members, some new board members, at their November 20th luncheon. That's coming up. That'll be their Thanksgiving luncheon. So, if you would like to be able to vote, go to their luncheon, and you can vote for some new members. And next Friday, they will be hosting their Halloween party at the Senior Center. And that's about, well, I've got, go see.
Well, I couldn't, I mean, I second you at all, totally, with the whole business appreciation breakfast. What a great event. And, I mean, Debbie and staff does a phenomenal job, and I'm just very proud of that. Mayor did a great job doing her talks and presentations. But wonderful, wonderful event. I really am thrilled that we have that. And I hope I get invited to attend in the future. I also wanted to mention that the school district, I went to their meeting, but they did have a celebration for Max Wilsie, as well as Mark Clark. Max was celebrating 54 years of service to the school district. So, he is now kind of more or less done with his term on being on the Board of Education. The same thing with Mark Clark. He's finishing up his eight years, and of course, running for a city council position in Westminster. But it was a very nice event. It was something that was really kind of moving to see how much they're loved and how they'll be missed. Also went to Bob Briggs. He had a reception. He's term limited over in Westminster. It was a very nice thing, seeing people honor him and show him appreciation. He's done a lot of work, but he's still planning on going on lots of other things with RTD and different programs. Safe Street Halloween, Chief, I never cease to be amazed with your creative talent, your sculptures, and all the wonderful things you do. It's just so cool and animated, and I love it. I'm sorry, I could stay probably in the cemetery for a long time. I do like the cemetery area. I don't know, I'm really into that. But I did want to mention, I mean, I probably could stay in there a long time anyway, right? But the Northland Community Foundation just wanted to mention that we are having a dine-in-donate on November 4th over at the Glen. And what that really means is, from 5:00 to 10:00, if people order food, food only, they will give us 10% back to the community foundation to help with the utility assistance program. So, go there, eat a lot, eat a lot of dessert, you know, that kind of thing. That way, we get 10% back. So, that's it for me.
Deal. I just wanted to thank staff for the business breakfast. A lot of work goes into that. It's a year's worth of planning. It was a great theme concept this year, and I think the timing couldn't have worked out better. And just a quick little acknowledgement, we did have Mr. and Mrs. Bean, who we deemed Mr. and Mrs. Northland. So, that was great to also see their involvement in the city. And so, just want to thank everybody for putting that together.
I would just like to thank the residents of Ward 4 for allowing me to serve you for the last eight years. Thank you.
And Mayor, real quick, I think I forgot to say that. Maybe we should give a round of applause to Jean and Leslie and Wayne, you know, because I know this is the last regular meeting for them.
Yes, I agree.
I think they've done a great job at representing our city, so.
That's right. Thank you. That was a good idea, great idea.
Joanna-- Mayor, I did get to, no, I did, just to let you all know, I did get to embarrass Jean just a little bit at the ward meeting, too.
Yes, you did. I remember that. I thought you were going to cry.
I did a little. I was able to hold it back a little bit. It was hard, though.
Joanna?
A couple of quick things to add on to that. I would like to invite everybody to come back and join us on November 9. That will be the organizational meeting of the city council, where the newly-elected council members will take office. But in addition to that, we will also take that time to honor the outgoing council members as well. And after the meeting, we will have a reception that is open to the public. The meeting's open to the public as well, so please come join us. And that will be another opportunity to say thank you to all the council members, both incoming and outgoing. And back up about a week, I would like to invite city council, the mayor mentioned this at the last meeting briefly, but we will have a reception on election night. So, next Tuesday night here in council chambers, please join us from 7:00 to 9:00. The city council candidates have been invited, as well as staff. So, we'll be watching the election results, enjoying some refreshments, and just getting to know each other during that time. So, please join us for that. And then, one last quick thing. I received an invitation that Adams County Clerk and Recorder Stan Martin will be having a demo of their, it's the pilot voting system. They're one of eight counties in the state who are participating in the Secretary of State's pilot program for the voting machine vendors. And the demos will be held on Thursday, October 29th at 10:00 a.m., and Monday, November 2nd at 10:00 a.m. So, if any council members would like to attend that, I'd be happy to RSVP you for that event. So, just let us know.
All right, thank you.
And that's all.
David?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Corey?
Nothing this evening.
All right, then. Okay. Next is public invited. Be heard, three minutes per speaker. Is there anyone that would like to speak to council for up to three minutes? If so, please come forward. Seeing no one race forward, I move to adjourn into executive session pursuant to Section 4.5 Parent A of the City of Northland Home Rule Charter for Personnel Matters Regarding Council Appoyee Evaluations and to pursuant to Section 4.5 Parent D of the City of Northland Home Rule Charter for Legal Consultation and Advice Regarding Potential Litigation.
Second.
Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I'll close that vote. And the motion to adjourn to executive session passes unanimously.
Thank you. We're now in executive session.